We'll call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We get a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. Any conflict of interest declarations?
Oh, yes. I do need to recuse myself on item G1 due to my prox—any of G1? It's the CDBG project.
And I need—
Yes, G1.
If I may, if I need to recuse myself, time's up.
Is that affirmative? That would be affirmative, Councilmember Cruz, and that is for E7. Any changes or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, no changes or deletions to the agenda.
Sir?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
There are some corrections.
Okay.
Is this the time to address that?
That would be—yes, ma'am.
E1 is to correct. G2 and G3.
That one's on the consent—on the consent. Do you want to do that under consent, then?
Is that on the consent? Is the agenda? The last—
Is it the last agenda?
Yeah, if it's the last agenda, it would be part of this item, correct?
Okay, so we'll address that then. Thank you.
That is correct, Mayor. I believe that Councilmember Cruz has some proposed amendments to the minutes that are item E1. And our—just for reference, our city clerk did add amended minutes to your packet for your consideration. We'll bring that up when the times—when we bring that—when that item comes forward.
Perfect. We'll make sure to—we'll make sure to poll that item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. Do you have anyone in the attendees?
Thank you, Mayor. Nobody is present online or in person.
Thank you, sir. And no one in the audience as of now, so we will move on. See communications. Anything?
No communications, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Right. Student liaison report.
So today I have that our principal, Dr. Goyle, has been helping senior students applying to colleges and to scholarships. Ms. Martha Cruz came to speak to our senior American Government classes on September 30th and discuss civic engagement and her experience about being mayor and a council member. And most of our seniors have began ordering caps and gowns on October 4th, and the deadline for ordering those is December 12—December 1st. Our sophomores took the PACT today and are now awaiting their scores. Our senior night for our volleyball players is tomorrow on Thursday. Our key club and interact clubs have started with fall activities such as the harvest fair and helping with our—with marathons. And key club will be going to Six Flags for Fall Rally on October 22nd. And for football, on the 30th of September, we won against undefeated Willets, 35 to 29, double overtime. And we beat St. Helena on the 7th. Last time Cloverdale beat St. Helena was in 2009. That's it for my report.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, can we say congratulations? I know when I was in high school, St. Helena was always the one to beat, and so that's a—no victory since 2009, that's a milestone, and please pass along our congratulations. That's a great accomplishment. And congratulations to the seniors playing their last home volleyball game as well. That's a—that's a tearjerker for all the parents, so, yeah, thanks so much for that report. That was great.
I didn't want to be the only one that talked about sports, but that was the best high school football game I've ever seen when they played Willets. It was amazing. Double overtime, it was great. Sorry. Okay, proclamation, Children's Environmental Health Day. Does anyone want to read this? Seeing none, I will. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale proclaiming October 13th, 2022, as Children's Environmental Health Day in Cloverdale. Whereas the aim of Children's Environmental Health Day is to raise awareness about the importance of clean air and water, safe food and consumer products, and healthy environments to children's health and development. And whereas CEH Day was created by the Children's Environmental Health Network and celebrated for the first time on October 13th, 2016. And whereas CEH Day is observed on the second Thursday in October as a means to celebrate progress of the Children's Environmental Health Movement and create a strong network of child health advocates. And whereas CEH Day is a national effort supported by individuals, nonprofit organizations, and government agencies. And whereas CEH Day encourages individuals and organizations to raise awareness and understanding of children's environmental health issues, seek improved protections for all children, and to perform acts of sustainability or environmental health wellness. And whereas together, we can safeguard the health, safety, and well-being of our most precious resource, children. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Todd Lance, do hereby proclaim Thursday, October 13th, 2022, as Children's Environmental Health Day in Cloverdale, and urge all citizens to observe this day with awareness raising and environmental health and stewardship activities to create a healthier environment for our children. Dated October 12th, 2022, so ordered myself.
Yeah, this is something I believe we've been doing every year, and it's just so important as policymakers to understand, you know, our responsibility and our obligation to our most vulnerable citizens. And that's so often children in our community. We don't have to look too far back. This week, you know, a daycare in Southern California was evacuated because there was a carbon monoxide leak in the daycare, and one child was found unconscious and rushed to the hospital, and multiple students were rushed to the hospital. And it's just a reminder that the really boring work we do around building codes is—it's the foundation of the safety of our families and kids in our—in our community. You know, something that we've also been working on at our—at RCPA and other, you know, cities in Sonoma County have adopted reach codes. And one of the things that we don't talk about often enough is the fact that natural gas cooking in homes is one of the—is a huge danger for children and small children who oftentimes are at risk for asthma and other health problems. You know, the EPA was purposely prevented from regulating indoor air quality by the natural gas industry, and it is responsible for—that natural gas is responsible for so many of our accidents and incidents that endanger children and families. So I'm glad that we're raising awareness about this, that we're talking about it in our region, and it's not just outdoor air quality, it's indoor air quality and, you know, providing a safe and—a safe place for people to raise their families, walk their kids around town, attend safe schools and safe buildings, and attend safe events in, you know, beautiful performing arts centers like this one that were partially paid for with—with local tax dollars. So I'm very happy that we're passing this and that we're recognizing the importance of the air and water to the next generations.
Anyone else? Councilmember Cruz? Seeing none, we'll move on to E consent calendar. At this point, I already have E1 and E7 polled for two different reasons by Councilmember Cruz. Is there any other items that need to be polled?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer the consent calendar with the exception of item E1 and E7.
Second, or race to the top.
You can choose, Michael, on that one.
All right, Bagby comes first in the alphabet. We'll go with Bagby at the time. With that, we'll start with Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
All right, Councilmember Cruz, if you don't mind with E1, you had mentioned it was some corrections in the meeting minutes.
You know, before we start, I've got a function—I have a functional question. Michael, did we get that update pushed to legislate? Because I didn't—I don't have it in here.
In your iLegislate app, you might have to do the refresh button and—
Oh, shoot. Okay, yeah, because I already—okay, then that's—that's my bad. Thank you.
Yes, and the correction we made on there was the correction to the student liaison's name.
If I quit in the iPad and bring it back up, do you think I'll see it? I guess I'm going to have to—
Yeah, yeah, you'll have to get out of this meeting.
Gotcha.
Click refresh and then go back into the meeting. The right end.
Well, it was—it was simple. It needs to read Lance, Bagby, and Paula.
Oh, for which item?
It was the updated amendment.
And G3.
Thank you. I can definitely amend those.
And then I need—I guess, did I vote on E7 by yourself?
No, so let's—let's finish E1 because E7 is the one that you're going to recuse yourself from.
Right.
So with E1, do you want to make a motion with those changes?
Yes, please. Let's just go ahead and put the corrections as indicated.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. And public comment, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Please for a roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
And Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Will be approved as amended. Thank you.
Yeah, and maybe just in the future, we could get an email if that does happen, just a quick email saying, oh, hey, quit iLegislate, go back in, because I never saw it, so, great. Thank you.
For E7 with the recusal, do we need her to—can she mute?
That's absolutely right. So for E7, if we could have—you turn off your camera, Councilmember Cruz to recuse yourself, and this—I don't think there's any presentation needed. I think it was just for separate vote.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now we'll bring up E7.
I'd like to offer the items, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
You have a first and second. No public comments because there is no public. We'll call when you are ready.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
For the record, Councilmember Cruz recused herself due to proximity of her house. Councilmember Cruz, if you can hear us, can you come back to the meeting?
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to G1 under new business. It's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale designating the City of Cloverdale's priority project and authorizing submittal of application to the Sonoma County Community Development Commission for fiscal year 2223, community development block grant funding for the city First Street Sidewalk ADA Improvement Project.
And, Mr. Mayor, due to my proximity to the project, I will now recuse myself.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby?
Yeah, sure. Mayor, councilmembers, this item is a resolution authorizing us—the staff to submit for a CDBG grant for an ADA sidewalk improvement project on First Street near Mulberry. We're—the reason we selected this project is because it supports safe routes to school, and it's also in light of the Asti Road multifamily project that was recently approved. We feel like this is going to help assist moving pedestrians from that into town. Normally, the CDBG comes out in the springs. We may have another opportunity to go for another one, but the Community Development Commission had extra money, so they did additional NOFA, so Notice of Available Funding. We've done a number of CDBG projects, the Healdberg Avenue and Cloverdale Boulevard. We did some ADA improvements at Second Street Park and a few others, but we haven't gotten an award in a while, so I'm optimistic that we will. It's not real competitive. It's divided up amongst the non—the seven—the small cities in the county. The application is due next week, so we're hoping to get approval on this resolution tonight, and we'll get cracking. We've already started on the application a little bit, and so a recommendation is that you adopt the resolution authorizing our submittal for a CDBG grant application for the First Street sidewalk ADA improvements.
Thank you, Kevin. Any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that's an excellent choice, and I appreciate you putting this in. It's very needed, especially in light of the Asti Road housing project's going to go in, so it's just going to start the process of getting a safe route in that area. It's long overdue, so thank you for putting this together.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I already know the answer to this question, but I'm going to ask it anyhow. Besides municipalities, are there any other agencies that are allowed to apply for the grant money? And I'm referring to SMART. Are they authorized to apply for the block grants? My guess would be no, but it doesn't hurt to ask.
The—the particular funding that is—that we're applying for in this particular instance is specific to the—what are called non-entitlement cities, and it's—we're—we're members of a joint powers agreement with the county, so it's a fairly limited pool of cities that can apply for this particular pot of CDBG funds. Petaluma and Santa Rosa, as entitlement cities, have their own direct access to community development block grant funds directly through HUD, but generally, these funds are—this particular pot of CDBG funds is restricted to the—to the cities.
Thank you.
There—is just, as mentioned in the agenda report, a separate set of funds under what's called the Home Program. That program is open to developers of affordable housing to apply for, but those resolu—if those projects are located within a city, the city would have to support funding by way of a resolution for those particular funds.
Are they aware of that?
Yes.
The developers—
I did, yeah. I sent the NO file to all our affordable housing, and nobody seemed to want to apply. They had the funding in place.
What's—what was the drop date again? The drop dead date?
It's the 20th. I think it's next.
20th. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Cruz? Seeing nothing, we'll open it up to public. No one in our audience and no one in the attendees list, so we'll bring it back to the dais.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce the resolution by title only, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale designating the City of Cloverdale's priority project and authorizing submittal of application to the Sonoma County Community Development Commission for fiscal year 202223, community development block grant funding for the city's First Street sidewalk improvement project.
I'll second, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Your choice, Michael.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye. Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby recused herself from this item.
Okay, moving forward to G2, amendment of Title IX of the Cloverdale Municipal Code at Chapter 9.35.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. While—the chief's getting ready here, I'll just kind of briefly cover this item. The item denied is an introduction of an ordinance. Really, what you'll hear is critical infrastructure ordinance, but this is a reflection of the Martin v. Boise case, which—which in essence made our existing camping ordinance unconstitutional. And what is going to—the presentation tonight, the chief's going to walk it through, is a presentation of the draft ordinance, which is, you know, really intended to address some of the constraints that we encounter with the Martin v. Boise case and provide for restrictions that really address some of the impacts to our critical—critical infrastructure. And so you'll see accordingly throughout this presentation that the slideshow is predicated on—I mean, the ordinance is really—the basis is to protect our critical infrastructure and also address the impact of homelessness in what are considered to be either sensitive environmental areas or have unique health and safety threats, for instance, in higher fire areas or flood areas. So just a little bit of background, but the chief's going to give us a kind of a detailed Chief might point it over here. There we go. All right, so I think David covered a lot of it to get started, so I'm going to browse through and move through that first one. Here's the agenda. What we're going to cover tonight in the PowerPoint is an introduction, a summary, a background, need for amendments under the Martin versus Boise case, which David talked about, and approaches adopted by other jurisdictions that we're seeing in Sonoma County, as well as a summary of the proposed amendments, recommended actions as well, and then we'll open it for any questions and comments that I'm sure somebody might have at the end here. Does he not like to stay on very long? Okay, so looking at the introduction, staff recommends that council introduce by title only and waive the first reading of the ordinance, amending Title IX of the Cloverdale Municipal Code to repeal Chapter 9.34, which is titled "Human Habitation of Vehicles and Campers", and add Chapter 9.35, titled "Protection of Critical Infrastructure and Wildfire Risk Areas." The proposed amendments balance the legal rights of unhoused individuals to have a place to sleep where there is no shelter otherwise available for those individuals with the need to regulate the growth and duration of large encampments for the overall health and safety of the community at large. So we talk about legal rights. We're primarily addressing the Martin versus Boise decision and what rights are afforded those individuals who happen to reside out in our River Park area, one of our more concerning areas, where certainly the overall health and safety, as put here in the language, is a significant concern for our entire community, not just the individuals themselves, but our community as a whole. Of course, there's ongoing legal challenges. This is ever-evolving. We face these regularly about these challenges on coming up with solutions to address this growing problem and the encampments that we've seen in the River Park area, as well as newly owned property of SMART on the railroad tracks of First Street and then around our cemetery property as well. Some of the jurisdictions aren't necessarily enforcing camping ordinances or tying enforcement to shelter availability, but rather others are enacting ordinances such as what Cloverdale's trying to do, that attempt to align with recent legal cases. We are recommending that we use the latter approach in enacting camping ordinances that attempt to align with regal—recent legal cases. And again, we take that latter approach, proposing the ordinance before you for consideration. By doing so, this would bring our ordinance in line with Martin versus Boise. Some of the things you'll see here, probably in the staff report there, that provide for the protection of critical infrastructure and wildfire risk areas, prohibited camping in certain sensitive areas, those include at or near critical infrastructure. I don't think it's any secret that we've reported out that we've had fires very close to our Public Works facility, more importantly, to our water treatment facility. As you will see, some of these protected provisions in here include a wildlife risk area, which is basically encompassing the River Park area as a whole. Intense brush, some of these encampments are embedded in there, as well as within 150 feet of a high water Russian River. I think we all recall, it was last year, where we had to rescue the individuals stranded on the riverbank out there because of the water and the levels the water came in increasingly quick, and it caused a significant safety hazard to those individuals. There's also within 500 feet of the well site. This is going to give a lot of a protection to our current water treatment plant facility, where we've had at least two significant scares by wildfires in that area. And then when we move into town, we're looking more within 10 feet of building entrances, exits, driveways, and/or loading docks. Next slide? Okay, so currently, the municipal code 9.34 generally prohibits overnight camping in public park, any public street, or any other public property, except in designated public camping or by authority of written permit. I think we've all seen this. It's fairly simple. It's very simplistic, but not too detailed in what is prohibited or what is permitted. Generally applicable to city-owned property and public property within the city. As it's currently written under 9.34030, that is the definition that you will currently see in our ordinance. Section 34 specifically—excuse me—prohibits camping in city parks except in a designated public campground or by—for in designated areas with a permit. Now, one of the things you're aware of that we have been enforcing specifically when it came to the plaza is the curfew violations. We do limit and prohibit those individuals, any individual for that matter, that's in sitting, standing, or lying in any one of our parks that goes beyond those hours of use. We've been real successful in this, in the plaza area. I think there's been a significant difference in seeing that throughout the day, specifically in the later evening hours. So it does work. It's been great, and we continue to do that. So since the Martin decision, the city does not—and I say does not, but it also has not been able to enforce the sitting, standing, and lying in certain areas without a in advance notice, providing any other shelter opportunities. I think you all know here, we don't have that capacity. We've been asked before, well, what if it's in Hillsburg that they have one? Does that apply? It's my understanding that the interpretation of the law does not suggest that just because there's shelters in Santa Rosa doesn't mean that that's applicable for somebody who chooses not to go there, meaning we can't—we can't cite them for camping violation if the shelter is clear down in Santa Rosa. They don't want to go down to Santa Rosa, right? I interpret that as if we don't offer the shelter here, somewhere we can take them and put them here, then we're not going to be able to enforce that campaign. So—and I'm sure you've heard that, too, that—that question coming out. We get it all the time, but I believe the interpretation of the law suggests that that's what it means. Next slide? So going back to Martin versus Boise, this is pretty deep, and I don't want to really unpack the whole thing, but basically what I'm going to say is, most of you already know, but for those that are watching that aren't aware, basically Martin versus Boise was a group of homeless individuals in the city of Boise who came together and filed a lawsuit against the city because they did have shelters. However, some of those shelters had reached capacity, so those individuals were turned away from those shelters. And in the process of doing that, they were cited for camping violations of overnight camping, even though their arguments were that there was no place for them to go and that they didn't believe that the—the shelters—law enforcement didn't believe that just because the shelter was full gave you a right to sit out and camp overnight. So it was fought, and of course, here we have the Ninth Circuit's decision, the Nineteen, which now prohibits the anti-camping ordinance, basically saying if you don't have a facility or a shelter to house these individuals, you can't enforce their camping ordinances, which is sitting, standing, or lying in public property. And that included if you had shelters in your population that were full and those individuals got turned away, you could not cite those individuals simply because they —because they couldn't go into a shelter, it was not their fault. It was not their fault to be homeless, and so essentially, you couldn't cite them for that. And that's kind of where we stand right now, and that's been one of our challenges about why we can't just forcibly move people off the river, why we certainly can on any public property. And so a lot of this has been generated to try to help address the Martin decision, not—not over—not supersede it by any means, because we can't do that, but align with it and come up up with better solutions. Next... Okay. So as a result of the Martin decision, the city cannot criminally cite or arrest persons for condition of homelessness. I think I just explained that, such as sleeping or camping in public places. We see this often. This is often a challenge that we get, why can't we do this? So now I'm explaining why that comes down to it. Unless it can demonstrate that the individual subject to the citation or arrest was first offered shelter, otherwise, how alternative housing is available to them. Clearly, Cloverdale does not offer that. That is one of our challenges. The Martin decision outlines some general types of enforcement actions that are still legally permissible, even without providing adequate shelter. These are really important. So first is individuals who decline an officer's shelter, reasonably have access to or the means to acquire shelter, are not shielded from enforcement. Second, the county may continue to enforce rules against obstruction of public right-of-way, streets, and sidewalks, or the erection of certain kinds of structures. Third, even when shelter is unavailable, an ordinance prohibiting sitting, lying, or sleeping outside at particular times or in particular locations might well be constitutionally permissible. Basically, what this is saying, there are some areas in Martin versus Boise that we can still enforce certain things. If there were a shelter provided and they didn't take the necessary means to use that, even though it's offered to them, you could potentially then issue a citation, force them to... The key is whether a local regulation punishes a person for lacking the means to live out of the universal and unavoidable consequences of being human in the way the ordinance prescribes. Next slide. Some of the approaches that we've seen by other jurisdictions, and mind you, a lot of the ordinance that is being proposed tonight does kind of align with the county's ordinance. We were aware of that. We liked a lot of what it had to say in there. We thought it was very applicable, particularly to the River Park area. So some of those are eliminate local restrictions on public camping altogether, prohibit enforcement of public camping ordinance unless there's sufficient shelter space available, impose restrictions on types of structures, geographic on public property, or type of camping materials allowed, permit public camping only in specified areas, impose only geographic restrictions on public camping, impose only time restrictions on public camping, and impose both reasonable time and place restrictions on public camping. Next slide. Okay. So the summary of proposed amendments, the following is a list of proposed amendments to bring the county's existing camping ordinances into compliance with current law under Martin versus City of Boise, while still providing the city with the necessary legal options to address encampments that may become a health and safety concern. So under 9.35, which will be an added amendment to the existing ordinance, would be it is unlawful and public nuisance for any person to camp at the following locations. So I described these earlier. So it's critical infrastructure, within 50 feet of critical infrastructure, within 50 feet of vehicle or pedestrian entrance or exit of critical infrastructure, wildfire risk area, within 150 feet of high watermark of waters of the state, and within 500 feet of a well site. Very important for us, particulars that relates to the wildfire risk area. I'm not sure if all of you were present at the last meeting. I think I reported, I did a check of fire responses to the River Park area, specifically that area, from 2020. And from January to current, there were 130 responses, fire-related responses to that area. And that encompasses Geiza Road, River Park, that encompasses all the common Asti Road, First Street, all the areas that we're familiar with, that we have seen. Next slide. No person shall camp or obstruct the street, sidewalk, or other public right of way by camping, sitting, lying, or sleeping, or by storing, using, maintaining, or placing personal property, one, in a manner that impedes pedestrian passage on the sidewalk or walkway, within 10 feet of a driveway or loading dock, or three, within 10 feet of any building, entrance, or exit. And no person shall occupy or use an area greater than 10 feet by 10 feet for storage or unattended personal property on any city-owned parcel. I know, Melanie, I was walking with you one night, the importance of something like this is we've seen this, right? This gives us more ability to enforce this particular situation where we've seen the individuals on the sidewalks or within that distance of an entryway. And these things were difficult for us to enforce unless they were actually blocking the doorway to the business. This gives us a little more latitude in dealing with that. One of the other things that's good about this is there's an enforcement mechanism to this and a component that allows us to obey an issue. As long as we've done the proper notifications, and so long as we've followed up trying to offer resources, which we will always do, and as you know, one of our challenges is not so much the people that need help, that we try to get help to, and we've proven that, that we've done that, and we've provided housing. It's the individuals who are choosing not to take advantage of the resources, who choose to live this lifestyle, but at the same token, are really creating a safety hazard for themselves and others, not to mention environmental damages that are existing with large-size encampments out there. So this does provide that enforcement mechanism that's really important for us. Next slide. Okay. So the recommended actions tonight, as we said, will be introduced by title only and waive first reading of the ordinance, amending Title IX of the Cloverdale Municipal Code to repeal Chapter 9.34, human habitation of vehicles and campers, and add Chapter 9.35, protection of critical infrastructure in wildfire risk areas. B, authorize staff to bring back a resolution identifying critical infrastructure. Next slide. That's it. Does anybody have any questions?
Mayor, members of council, if I can, just real quickly to add, as you may garner, the term "critical infrastructure" is fairly broad. It is defined in the ordinance, but one of the things that we would like your feedback on tonight is if there's any specific critical infrastructure that you'd like to identify, and if so, we will bring that back by way of a resolution with the second reading of the ordinance. And the reason we're proposing to do that is really out of flexibility, because over time, as land use changes happen, new development occurs, infrastructure changes in the city, it will give us some flexibility to be able to update our list of critical infrastructure without necessarily having to do that by ordinance. So we've spelled out in the agenda report that we would bring back the resolution that would identify the specific critical infrastructure that you'd like to be... That would be referenced in... Or by way of the ordinance that we're introducing this evening.
Yeah. Thanks so much for a great presentation, just running through a little bit of the history and where we are now and the updates that definitely need to happen. You're going to be... You're a lot more polite than I am, because I'm going to name one of the worst agencies that's causing the biggest problems, and that's Caltrans. That Caltrans area across, like, on the west side of the... What's now Smart property is where one of the major encampments is. And, you know, when Eddie and Bill Gamblin came up here in March and did the tour around the Asti Road area, I insisted that they also go to the cemetery, and they take a look at the conditions there. And Eddie said, well, I'll tell you something, Melanie, my wife will be caught dead here. And I said, well, I guess a little tougher. So, you know, because I do go out there fairly often, but he just took one look at it, and with his background in transportation and his background in, you know, even new to Smart, just with his extensive background in transportation, he's like, oh, I see exactly what the problem is here, and the fact that people are, you know, crossing from Caltrans, crossing the Smart property, and then into the cemetery, which is one of the jewels of our community, and it's an active and current place where families go to, you know, visit their family members and hold our veterans' events. And it's really clear that it's basically, you know, a trail across from Caltrans to the Smart property to the cemetery and to the River Park. So I'm going to be not as nice as you are and call them out as being probably the weak link in that partnership, because it's a problem that needs to get addressed. And then, I guess, just sort of as the... That was my comment. And then my follow-up question would be, also, are water tanks around town? I know that those are critical infrastructure. And then also a question just about the creeks that traverse the town, too. You know, the creeks that kind of skirt the high school property and go through town, and then the creek that goes over Third Street and actually ends up passing right by the cemetery and the River Park. Those are critical spawning areas as well. And I mean, I know that they're regulated by fish and wildlife, and Porterfield Creek, I think, probably gets put into that category as well. So, you know, how will it enable our ability to protect those waterways as well?
So I'll simply start, and maybe Alex can jump in. We would certainly look at this under the provisions that this ordinance would include. When we talk about waterways, we talk about critical infrastructure. We would be covered under anywhere where those would be in line with critical infrastructure, potentially even high watermark waterways, things that would endanger not only the individuals, but create issues for the community. I don't know if Alex wants to weigh in and add to that.
Yeah. And the ordinance, we... You know, the Russian River was what was called out, but the ordinance actually prohibits that within waters of the state, as defined in the water code, and that would include navigable water, like the Russian River, but also the tributaries to that.
Okay. Great. So that does get called into, because I think that, you know, the time that we ran into some folks on the sidewalk, folks are smoking their cigarettes, you know, leaving their plastic bottles behind. Those get blown into the storm drain, and they ultimately end up in a tributary and then in the Russian River, and then in our oceans. So, you know, it's part of our responsibility. But I really appreciate you calling out the fact that the River Park is a multi-use facility. It is a critical piece of city infrastructure, and the security of the water treatment plant and the security of the wells are paramount to the well-being, and it's just part of our fiduciary duty to make sure that those citizen-owned resources are secure and protected. So I appreciate the protection and the coverage of those resources. And that's why that park is so cool, because we are able to layer uses, but at the same time, then, our responsibility of making sure that they're secure is doubled or tripled. So thank you so much for pulling those details out.
Certainly want to give David credit for the presentation tonight. He put this together. Of course, I had no problem presenting it, but I want to make sure, just recognize that he's done a good job on this. And just want to add one thing to what you're saying. Everything you just addressed, I think what this ordinance is really designed to do is to ensure that we're keeping our public safe, we're not allowing the unhealthy, the contamination and the issues there. It really does a good job of kind of clearing up all those areas. This is not directed at getting rid of a problem or suggesting that we're just going to... It's really about public health. It's about public safety, and it's about as much about the environment. So all of those would be, I think, encapsulated real well in this ordinance.
And if I can add, council, you may recall in August of this year, council adopted the homeless strategic plan, and as part of that effort, we surveyed the community on what were some of the top priorities, and really, the number-one priority that was identified through the survey was public safety. And I think, you know, this is really intended to help address that critical concern by our community. So I think, you know, I really view this ordinance that is being introduced tonight as an implementation of your homeless strategic plan that you've adopted just a few months back.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes. Good evening. I would like to know what is going to be the accumulation of violations. I mean, what is that going to mean for those homeless people that do not agree to go somewhere else and that are constantly and continuously cited?
Did you say cited there at the end? I'm sorry. I didn't hear that last word.
Yes. Cited.
Yeah. So...
That's what it is here, that people are going to be cited.
Right. So let me start with what we typically do and have been doing, is we start with that education platform. We start with trying to get those resources that might change their mind about available resources to them. I can assure you that's what we've been doing. The last resort we want to do is come down to citations and potentially a criminal matter. It's really our last resort that we want to take, and I think we've kind of proven that. We've done a lot of efforts to get resources and educate folks. So we'll start there. Eventually, it would lead to potential citations. I can't answer as to what the outcome of each of those would be. It's on a case-by-case basis, of course, but I think the important takeaway here is it gives us the ability to do something about it when we currently cannot. And I think it's really important that we keep that in mind, that, you know, one of our biggest concerns is out there, and we've kind of been hamstrung on what we're going to do about it. Melanie's already talked about some of the resources that haven't come through that could have helped in a lot of these processes, so we're kind of left on our own with how to address it. But I think it's really important that if we give proper notice, we advise that they're having to move along to a high-fire risk, to a high-flood zone, we do the proper noticing, give them that opportunity to go and offer those resources. And absent that, it does give us that enforcement mechanism that we may have to do.
Thank you.
I hope that answered your question. I can't tell you for each citation how the outcome's going to be, whether or not the person goes to court, whether or not the person pays it. We have to see when we get there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you for that great presentation. You know, it's always... It's a very difficult subject, and I know everybody has different feelings and different thoughts on it, but it's a real problem for a lot of people. And I know there's a lot of resources being developed, and Councilmember Baggy, thank you for bringing up waterways. That's something I never thought about, and that is a very critical, important part of it. And I want to thank you, the city manager, for putting the presentation together. A couple of comments. I know we talked a little bit about the mobile mental health unit, and I think it's something we really need to follow through on. I did comment with Supervisor Gore's office, and he did check, and it is here, though we don't... I don't think they have the resources to really provide the service. So they do have it here, but it's really not here. So they're committed to work with us to see if we can maybe improve that. So I'm committed to set a meeting up. I think we really do need to talk to them about what resources are they lacking, what kinds of funding do they need, because the county put out substantial money for the southern cities. I think we need it up at the north part, too. So I wanted to just say that. I'm glad that we have the resolution process, so we can add and delete and make changes quickly. That's important, rather than have to go through a complete ordinance change. I would like to see a resolution come out that talks about schools. We talked a little bit about this at our homeless group meeting when we talked about this, but schools are very important, critical infrastructure, a lot of children, young children, very young children. We have daycare facilities within the town. We have a boys' and girls' club within the town, and we need to recognize those buildings, that there's youth unaccommodated by adults that are going in and out of those facilities. So we really want to make sure that those areas are kept clear. So I would welcome to see a resolution come back identifying some of these important areas, as well as maybe even our new medical centers. We're, you know, setting up an encampment around a medical center, make it very difficult for disabled people, trying to get in and out of those, and very uncomfortable for people as well. So that's my comments. I just want to thank you. I'm looking forward to the care program getting in place, because it does give us a little more teeth, will give you a little bit more teeth in cities, to deal with those that refuse help. And those are a big problem, because if the help's there and they refuse it, it ends up in the courts. That's not the right place for it. We really need to get them into a facility to get the help they need. So thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you.
That's it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, thank you for the presentation. Very enlightening. Maybe I'm carrying this a little too far, but once the ordinance is passed, will we then post signage in the plaza and other critical infrastructure areas?
So we will follow and adhere to whatever laws require us and how that posting goes. What we do have to do is adhere to the notice to the individuals themselves. What we do have to do is adhere to the notice to the individuals themselves. I would think that within the law, we would have to post it on the encampment itself, indicating that it's going to be abated within, I believe it's 72 hours. And then, which includes property and everything else. So we would adhere to whatever those laws are, but I'm going to guess that, yes, we would, the encampments, as well as notice the individuals. Maybe Alex can elaborate on that.
That's correct. There'd be some sort of notice. You know, the issue with citation, we wouldn't necessarily have to post notices in every location, but we would, obviously like the chief mentioned, the process earlier of, you know, giving people an opportunity to leave, notifying them directly that occurs. So there wouldn't be a need to post signs in every, you know, one of these locations. That would not be feasible, but there will be some notice process before anyone is cited or removed.
I will add real quickly that there is an exemption for that posting, and that is if there is a fire, unfortunately, if that were ever to happen, it come down in the valley, you would be exempt from that notice due to a safety concern. And you would have those individuals moved right away out of the area. Same would be said for a flood. So under those circumstances, where it's an emergency, defined emergency and clear emergency, we would be exempt from that notification.
And then, you mentioned, in reference to mirroring what the county is doing, and of course, that's really important, because we have the east side of, they have the east side of, we have the west side. So is it going to be verbatim, mirroring when it comes along the... You're shaking your head now.
Probably not verbatim. What I would tell you is the county's desire would be to have others join in and be similar to their approach to addressing this, so we're all on the same page and consistent. And I don't disagree with that, particularly in the area of the river park and those surrounding areas that are right across the way in the county's jurisdiction. I can tell you that their enforcement of this and notifications of this have already started and have been in existence for at least, I think I reported at one of our homeless meetings a month ago, that that process of notification had already taken place on the county's side.
And just backing up a little bit to the critical infrastructure, you know, I agree that the water tanks are really very important and as are the tributaries that come into the Russian River. You know, I'm also, you know, maybe I'm overreaching a little bit, but I consider just about every asset of the city to be critical infrastructure. City Hall is critical infrastructure, where we conduct our business. The fire station is critical. My goodness, even Ray's supermarket, you know, without that supermarket, you know, it's, you know, people won't be able to buy groceries. We could take the library, where they camp behind the library, the senior center. So where do we draw the line? Is it water? Is it sewer? Is it restricted?
Well, and part of, that's a great question, but part of the balance is you can't make it so broad that you've eliminated everywhere for the individuals to camp, because then you're back to violating Boise. So it's a process of really identifying what are the most critical infrastructure areas. The list of things you've said are things, for the most part, there are a couple others that are on our list that you'll see in the resolution, and we'll add the other ones you've said. But that's the balancing act, of sort of making sure it's not so big of a list that prohibits this, you know, camping anywhere, and then you're back to not having a place for individuals to camp.
Okay. So let me just go with a little bit, I'm sorry.
I just want to make a comment on what you just asked, if I could. That's what the beauty of the resolution process, because if a critical area does surface as we move on, it's going to be something that could be relatively fixed fairly quickly, case by case. I just wanted to...
I agree. And I think what the point that Alex is making is we can't just blanketly name every facility and every building in the city as critical infrastructure. And it prohibits and eliminates their ability to find somewhere that they may reasonably and lawfully be able to go. Then we fall into some issues.
Yeah, I totally understand that. And I think Councilmember Paula had mentioned about the Boys and Girls Club, and, you know, we can take in all the schools, you know, in the city as well, where young has been critical infrastructure. And then just backing up for a minute to Councilmember Bagby's remarks about SMART, you know, I would consider that critical infrastructure as well, all of that property. I can tell you now, when Congressman Huffman was here a few weeks ago, and Eddie Cummings got here a little early, he and I had quite a chat, and I shared with him pictures about what's going on in the SMART facility. There's that metal shed where the railroad tracks cross Asti, north of the filtration plant. That is just full of homeless garbage. There are electrical boxes where the wires are separated.
Well, before you get too deep into that, Gus, we hope to have news for you on that, but we can't talk about it yet.
I didn't hear what you said.
I think what you're talking about is the former NCRRA corp yard. Yeah, that's, sorry, which one are you talking about?
The south end where the Dusty Road.
Oh, okay.
On the south side, past the transportation depot.
Oh, sorry, those pictures. Gotcha. So south of the depot, south of the passenger depot. Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, so the electrical boxes, the trash is full of trash, and now there's graffiti on that building up by the tracks. When you come off the ramp, you can see the spray paint. So, you know, that's critical infrastructure to me. I don't want to limit it so badly that people can't camp when we can't comply with their requests for shelter, but we really need to cherry pick those locations, so.
Yeah, I think one of the things we'll look at when we look at that is what other provisions could be applicable, i.e. river, close to the river, you know, is it a wildfire risk? Is it a watermark risk? We're going to be looking at those provisions, too, that may be applicable under that circumstance. What I am going to say about SMART real quick is, once they took over ownership of that property, they were very quick to move in one of our larger encampments that was off the railroad tracks just before the tunnel on the west side. That was cleaned up and that was gone within a fairly quick amount of time, and the contact and communication with them was pretty productive early on. In fact, we contacted a couple individuals who had been contacted by them, given an amount of time, and they were working on the cleanup aspects as we were out there. So that's positive, too, as well.
And prior to them acquiring that property, we had a rather good working relationship, and we still do with SMART, with North Coast Rail Authority. As a matter of fact, they gave us permission to move onto their property, clean out that tunnel along the tracks, take down that building. Mr. Kelly would be quick to tell you that they still owe us money for doing that, but we did have their working agreements, too.
Actually, you need to...
And we have to do that.
We need to bring that to the attention of the GTRA, if that is, if that's an outstanding bill, that should come to GTRA staff, because I wasn't aware of that.
Let me just finish this thought, and then you can share with us that bill. So, you know, that good working relationship, we have it with SMART, but it's always been there, and it's just like anything else when we deal with this subject. You know, we clean it up, it comes back. We clean it up, it comes back. And we really need to just stay on top of it. But I'm preaching to the choir. Councilmember Bagby, you were going to talk about that bill?
No, I didn't, that, no. But to clarify, we're talking about, in this language, city property, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so it's everything that's under the jurisdiction of the city of Cloverdale. But I just wanted to make sure that that's what we're talking about. SMART actually has a pretty good track record of cleaning up their tracks and a pretty good methodology, so they're doing a pretty good job. But on this, I just want to make really clear that we're talking about city facilities, and of course, if SMART wants to.
Yeah, and I brought it up because you brought up SMART, so that's why I brought it up, but...
Okay.
Okay.
So the good thing about this is private property can do what they call...
Private property, yeah.
It's called different things, different towns, but it's like a trespass action request, which means that the private entity gives permission for law enforcement to go in and clear out these encampments without the noticing that they have to do on public property. So that's another feature that is not included in this resolution to solve that issue.
Mr. Mayor, the definition of critical infrastructure that's in the ordinance, you know, it says, "real property or facility, whether privately or publicly owned, as designated by a resolution of the council, that the council designates as being so vital, integral to the operation and functioning of the city, that its damage or destruction would be debilitating impact on public health." So like, we do have the ability to identify some private facilities, you know, where that would be critical infrastructure as well.
That's very helpful, so if we had a, if we contracted out for a city service that was essential, but it wasn't city property, it could be covered.
Or the PG&E plant.
The PG&E substation, things like that.
Exactly. I mean, it would still be, you know, you mentioned Caltrans, you know, they're the hardest to get cooperation from, so that, you know, could still be a problem with some of those other examples of private facilities, you know, could be listed as critical.
Thank you. And actually, just sort of as a final comment, I appreciate that this sort of, I think I heard that it brings us into line with the county. And I think that just because of the proximity of the river park straddling, you know, being partially in the city, having a city facility, and then having county neighbors, we've heard pretty loud and clear from the folks on McCray Road about their concerns, and I think that this will go a long way to gaining their trust and knowing that we're an active partner with them. It is in our interest that McCray Road is fire-safe and that we are fire-safe, because embers don't care about city limits. So, yeah, I really want to commend staff. I think that you've done a fantastic job and just put us in the best position that we can be in the current, you know, the current legal requirements that we're just having to live with. So I just, I think that you've done a great job to protect our residents as best we can. And it just sort of gets it out there, too, that the river park is a really special case. It is multi-use, multimodal. We've got water, we've got, we're pumping water, we're treating water, and it's also a great place to go out and really enjoy the Russian River, and it's a very precious resource. So protecting it, making sure that it's secure, is just absolutely paramount for us. So thank you, Chief, and thank you, staff, for bringing this before us tonight, doing such a great job of putting it together.
Student liaison, do you have any comments or questions or anything you might want to say about this?
At the moment, I don't really have any comments to really add.
I just want to thank everyone. This has been a long time coming. We've been beating our heads against the wall since the day Martin versus Boise came out. And I know our town worked very hard together and with the county, and to have the county get on board at the same time we were. We're not last, we're not first, but we are right in line with everyone else, and we have done it right. And I thank you guys for all your hard work on this and finding the ways to keep our community safe, keep our environment safe, and keep everyone healthy, because we've seen what happens when the shelterless or the service-resistant, as they call them, are out there destroying our environment. So thank you. I'm not going to go on and on and on.
Just a question. Did, Jose, were there any amendments, are there any amendments to the current language that you heard in the direction to staff? Or can we offer the, can we offer the item as written?
Sure.
I just, you know, just before, yeah, I just want to find out.
No amendments, no amendments have been mentioned. What's been discussed is that resolution. As Alex pointed out, there is a definition for the infrastructure as far as what's critical, which we have to balance, because I hear there's a lot of concerns. Now, I will point out, there's other, this ordinance is not just about kind of just those critical, that critical infrastructure as far as picking kind of locations. It also provides, if you're looking at the ordinance itself, and it's 935030B, "No person shall camp or obstruct a street, sidewalk, or other public right-of-way by camping, sitting, lying, or sleeping, or by storing, using, maintaining, or placing personal property," and then it has certain locations, "in a manner that impedes pedestrian passage or any sidewalk or walkway, within 10 feet of any driveway or loading dock, or within 10 feet of any building entrance or exit." What that does is that also provides a little clarity when we're looking at or thinking about the Boys and Girls Club, for example. A lot of stuff happens potentially maybe on the sidewalk, maybe by the entrance. We're also looking at the different tools that we currently have, that the police department currently has regarding private property. Again, the difference, and I think, Mayor, you mentioned correctly, there are other tools, when it's private property, it's treated different than public property. So the ordinance does go and kind of, you know, we talk a lot about the toolbox, right, of potential tools. It does provide an avenue to kind of deal with some of those more sensitive issues. And you have to be very clear, it doesn't criminalize homelessness. That's not the intent of this. The intent is to find kind of that balance, following the case law of, it's not an absolute no, you can't do anything, but you have to be pretty specific about where you're enforcing and why. And public health usually, and safety usually, is at the forefront of this.
One of the biggest examples we had from last year was the floods, when we had the eight inches of rain in one day. We were down at the river, I was down there personally, contacting every homeless person, saying, "Get out of the riverbed, it's going to flood." They refused, and within 24 hours, our first responders are out there in boats, trying to save these people's lives. That's health and safety. That's an issue. So that's where a lot of this started stemming from, is we cannot allow this. And so, and the 86 fires in two years down in that area as well, now over 130. So let me open up to public comment. There's no one in the audience, and I see one person on the attendees list. Do not have a hand up, so we will bring it back to the dais.
And it's the ordinance amending Title IX, is that correct?
The, correct. The motion that, the recommended motion we're looking for is to, to actually to introduce and waive an ordinance amending Title IX, and then the title's there, but it's waiving, it's introducing a waiving the first reading.
Okay. I'd be happy to do that. I'd like to introduce and waive the first reading, and I'll recommend the item by title only, an ordinance of the city, of council of the city of Cloverdale, amending Title IX of the Cloverdale Municipal Code to repeal Chapter 9.3, Human Habitation of Vehicles and Campers, add Chapter 9.3.5, Protection of Critical Infrastructure and Wildfire Risk Areas.
I'll second that.
And Councilmember Bagby, could I clarify this? Chapter 9.3.4, not all of 9.3.
I said nine point, I thought, oh, I said nine, Chapter 9.3.4. Repealing 9.3.4, adding Chapter 9.3.5.
Thank you so much. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Start with Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
No.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
And Mayor Lenz?
Aye.
Motion passes with four ayes.
And Mayor, before we move on, if we could just get clear direction from the council, I think, I think at least the majority of the council is in favor of us, of staff, working on that resolution and bringing that, since that sets forth the critical infrastructure that would go along with the ordinance. Again, we still have time, since the ordinance wouldn't be in effect until it's required a second reading and then 30 days after. So if the council provides that direction, we'd be working so both the resolution and the ordinance kind of come online at the same time.
And I appreciate your explanation. It would be counterproductive to throw in the entire kitchen sink, but I think to Councilmember Paula's point is that if we identify new areas that are critical infrastructure, that they can be added, deleted at a later time, that gives us the flexibility and the recommendation, we can respond to the recommendation of staff and chief, and, yeah, we can go from there. So I do really appreciate all of the work that went into this, how it's been structured, and that we're ready to move on it, because it's really an issue that, where we need to take action. So thanks again to staff for taking this on.
Mayor, just, again, just for the record, I think, I would assume, Councilmember Cruz, since you weren't in favor of the ordinance, also, you wouldn't be in favor of bringing that resolution, since it goes with the ordinance. So we're obviously taking the direction from the majority of the council on a 4-1 for that direction, unless I hear otherwise.
I have too many legal questions around this. There are too many uncertainties also. As much as I protect and I want to protect the infrastructure, I think it's a little bit, it's a little bit, you know, wide open to interpretation. And I appreciate Attorney Sanchez, your clarification to define what is essential infrastructure. But at the same time, I don't see a solution to what's going to happen to the people who have to sleep on a bench or who have to be at the river. Once I see a solution to that, once I see an alternative, then I would have voted for that. But I didn't see that. So I'm not comfortable voting to remove people who are homeless from Cloverdale.
Thank you. So 401 on that.
Correct. So we received a direction on a 401, with Councilmember Cruz not agreeing to move forward with that resolution.
Okay, we'll move on to subcommittee reports. Finance, Admin, and Police.
The next meeting is going to be November the 7th.
Planning and Sustainability.
October 18th.
Public Works.
Public Works, we've made a few changes, too. In order for us to get in three more meetings before the end of the year, the meeting of the 25th has been canceled, and that meeting will take place on the 20th. November, it will be the 17th, and in December, it will be the 7th. So three more meetings in before the end of the year. Thank you.
City and School District.
Next meeting is November 14th.
And the Homeless Community Advisory Group is November 8th.
And Mayor Lanz, just for the record, we want to let you be aware that the Public Works and Facilities and Planning and Sustainability agendas were posted earlier this week, a few days early, because I'm going to be out on training tomorrow, but it'll still normally come out on Thursdays in the future.
Thank you, Michael. All right, council reports. Just anything other than the annual reports. Seeing none. Any legislative reports?
Mayor, members of council, I don't, I do not have a legislative report. I did want to note that there was a statement that was released by the mayors, or through the Mayors and Council Members Association, by our own Councilmember Cruz, as well as Mayor Jimenez, and Vice Mayor Lemus with the Town of Windsor. It's a joint statement condemning hate speech by the Los Angeles officials and calling for their immediate resignation. Just wanted to note that on the record, that, that communication was sent out by way of the Mayors and Council Members Association.
Thank you, David.
Well, I just have a question on that. The signatures were not from the full city council, were they? It was just individuals?
This is advised by, this is a black, indigenous, and people of color statements. Elected officials who are black, indigenous, or people of color.
Okay. Okay, so it was a personal signature, it wasn't council member?
A personal signature as a council member.
It wasn't from the council, from the, it wasn't, it wasn't from like the city council, it was from the, from their capacity as councilmen, there was council members, but specific council members, not, not represented in the body.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I would imagine that this is going to come up at Thursday's Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Meeting. I, unfortunately or unfortunately, actually heard the, the actual recording, and it was shocking. I certainly, it, it's not enough for the former president of the board to have resigned. I'm also incredibly disappointed in Kevin DeLeone, who I've had occasion to meet on a couple of occasions, and really, you know, considered him to be a strong leader in the state. And when a horrible statement was made, he did nothing. He played into it, he played along with it, and it was the kind of bigoted, racist, horrific statement that is unacceptable in any venue. And for two other Los Angeles city council members, who represent one of the most diverse and dynamic cities in the world, let alone just in California, to have sat there and gone along with it, especially considering Kevin DeLeone's personal background and where he came from, I'm actually pretty pleased that this is coming forward, because it's just absolutely unacceptable in any professional environment. If somebody who worked at a company had been the target of that kind of a comment, the rep, it would justify, it would have been much more quicker, and the people would be gone, they would be fired, the people who were gone would be fired under employment law. Because they are elected officials, it's really up to the voters or for their own consciences to, for them to realize that it is time for them to step down. So I can imagine that's going to be a topic for mayors and council members on Thursday, so we probably should give some direction to whoever is going to be representing us at that, at that meeting, as to whether or not we want to sign on to any statement.
One of the things I'd like to know is why did it take a year for that to surface? That happened a year ago, and we're just finding out about it now. That's a disgrace.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Please, go ahead.
You know, we took the initiative, given that finally Sonoma County has members of the BIPOC community in elected positions. But it is something that all cities should complain about, something that should come to the forefront. It's a conversation that needs to be had, because it's not only Latinos speaking against their own Latino people, or against black people, or indigenous people of the Americas. Many of us in this council need to take count of this. And I think every town council should support the resignation of all these individuals that supposedly represent the constituents. All constituents need to be respected with dignity, all constituents are valuable. They have us in the positions that we hold, and we need to respect the position that we hold, and we need to highly represent not only ourselves, our constituents, but the charge of an elected official. So it is a conversation to be had, and I guess it's, it's time to stop brushing it under the rug. And perhaps it took a year for it to come out, because people are fearful. And I don't know if you heard in one of the news, they said they were going to find out who did it, and to punish this person. I think that was very courageous and necessary. It's reelection time, and I think it was the best time to have it out. Thank you.
The funny thing about this, if you have to find something different and a positive out of it, is it affected every single or close to race involved in our, in our world. It wasn't just one race or another, and so it affected everyone. And it's good to see everyone come together, and I think that we have consensus that we would be supporting this at the Mayor and Council Members Association meeting. It appears, I'm seeing nods of heads, so that's good. The fact that it affected everyone, and we're all, we all have to realize that we are equal. It doesn't, skin color is just that. But we're all humans, and we need to continue that way, and quit looking at it as the color of their skin or what their last name is, and start looking at it as people.
Like, also underlines, you know, something we've had discussions about, and I think it's going to bring it to the forefront. And a lot, many, many cities in California have creeds and codes of conduct for both attendees and for council members. And, you know, I really believe that when you take an oath of office, if you, if your city has an existing creed and code of conduct, and it's part of, you know, what's been adopted by councils, then when you violate it, you violate your oath of office. And that's what these three individuals did essentially. I mean, they, they took an oath to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States, the states of California and Los Angeles, and all of the guiding, and any meeting rules and codes of conduct that they would have adopted. And when you violate that, you violate your oath of office. So I think that that's really the basis and the grounds for the expectation, especially just seeing how horrific it was, the expectation that the three of them actually do resign. So I'm hoping that we'll see, the, the good side out of this is that we'll have an open and frank discussion about hate speak, hate speak, hate speech, harassment, and slander at the city level, the county level, and at the state level. And it should be taken seriously, not just as something that, oh, it's, you know, it's tough in the arena, you need to grow a thick skin. Well, you know, when someone's attacking someone's child, and that, that, hopefully that goes beyond everybody's idea of what's decent. But I hope that we, what, the good that can come out of it is that we have an open conversation that this kind of speech is absolutely, it's just unwelcome, whether you're an elected official or work, whether you work in a private company, and there should be consequences for that. So I, I, I think we're probably going beyond our, our topic right now, but we are going to be, we do have to give direction for the meeting on Thursday, so it's, I think it's, it's good that, hopefully this will engender further discussions about this and how we conduct ourselves and our, and our public lives.
All right. So we have good direction. Let's move forward to the city manager report.
Mayor, members of council, just a brief report. As council knows, you've been, staff has been working.
Can't hear you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. As, as council knows, staff has been really busy working on some very important park improvement projects. We are just about ready to fully wrap up completion of the new pickleball courts at, at Ferber Park. I think today, we finalized the remaining improvements, and we are planning a grand opening ceremony on October 22nd at 9 o'clock at, at Ferber Park. We hope you can join us. But otherwise, the parks, the pickleball courts will be officially open tomorrow, informally for members of the community who would like to play this new burgeoning sport in the United States and world, actually. In addition, sticking on the topic of parks, we opened bids this week for new basketball courts at, at City Park, and we'll be bringing forward, for council's consideration, a water bid. We were pleased to receive the lowest responsible bidder, we got seven bids for that project, is a local contractor. So really happy to see a local contractor come in with the lowest responsible bid, and again, we're planning to bring that forward, so we can get that project started and underway. That concludes my report, Mayor.
David, with, since you're talking about parks, is it a good time to talk about the process with the dog park you've been working on? Or should we hold off? Is it, are we carting for the horse?
Sure, I'd be happy to give a brief update.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question about the people before we go?
In, in, in one minute, please, I want him to finish this report, and then we'll come back to you, so please, thank you.
Yes. Concurrently, staff is working with Smart on a license agreement for a proposed dog park adjacent to the train station. The, the, the city has provided comments back to Smart, we're working on just some, some final details to be able to execute, be able to finalize the agreement. Ultimately, we're going to be bringing that back to council with the CIP to address the proposed improvements that would be necessary, you know, which primarily focus on the, the access to the park, to make sure we have an accessible entrance, and as well as fencing. So we've received a quote for the fencing, so we're still working on kind of putting all the final pieces together on that, in collaboration with Smart. So we, we really do hope to bring that forward as soon as possible, just a little bit more planning work before we were able to finalize that agreement for council's review.
Thank you.
Pretty exciting on the park front, we're doing.
Appreciate Councilmember Bagby for making that happen, and you guys pushing forward and making sure that you're ready to go and hit the ground running the second the paperwork is signed. Ink is wet, and you're digging holes, I love it. Councilmember Cruz, go ahead.
Yes, I still have not received, or we as council have not received, the request that I made when we voted on the pickleballs, which was, what is the organization for people to request they use the pickleballs, and where are the equipment, where is the equipment going to be held? I had suggested, and that was to be brought up for discussion, and I don't think we have, that there are, that there is equipment available for checking it out from variety of public institutions within the city. And I specifically identified the senior center, the library, La Familia Sana, the Chamber of Commerce, and I don't recall where else, but I had one more that I had suggested. Kevin, could you please follow up on that?
Mayor, I'll address, excuse me, Councilmember Cruz. I think the other organization that you identified was Nuextra Comunidad. And we, staff has ordered equipment, we have not received it yet, but we have received, well, the, the, the kind of exciting part about pickleball is it requires very, very little equipment, a paddle and a ball. And so staff has already made the orders of equipment, so we'll be coordinating once we receive that, providing that to the organizations that were previously referenced, to enable folks to, to check the, check out that equipment for, for, for use at, at the new, at the new pickleball courts. So they'll be made available to, to the community on a kind of a checkout basis.
And the scheduling?
We do not have a schedule yet, but we, we need to, obviously, there's, you know, number of organizations we'll need to coordinate with. The park will be signed, and it'll be based on current park hours, kind of dusk to dawn or dawn to dusk, for, and that'll be basically the hours of availability of the, of the pickleball courts.
Remember, the emphasis on this is because we do not want one organization to monopolize the pickleballs. And we want to make sure that this is also available to all the community through our page, our council member pages, and also in Cloverdale Connect. So this still has to be fine-tuned, and I hope that all these announcements are made in Spanish and English.
Just as our basketball, baseball, softball, volleyball, everything that we have in our town, all those sports, it's the same.
I just want to make sure that it is in that fashion. Thank you.
And it's, it's good.
Yeah, you know, this, what this points to, I think, council's interest in this is, is a goal that, you know, staff is continuing to build upon, and that, that's establishment of a recreation division within, within our parks. Because really, the recreation division would ultimately facilitate the programming that would be, that council's expressing a support for, and, and providing that in multiple languages and multiple demographic groups within our city. So it is a work in progress, it's, it doesn't happen overnight, it does require commitment of resources, but staff is working on it, and we certainly intend to, to continue developing our, our recreation program as, as we make progress on these projects.
Thank you, David. City Attorney report.
Just, just quickly, Mayor, I wanted to thank Alex for, for coming to the meeting. He worked very closely with the chief and staff on the critical infrastructure ordinance, and also he's, he's working on the legislative update for the council on the new bills that I mentioned last time regarding housing. That also includes changes to the ADU law as well. So I know we'll, we'll have something for the council, I know he's working on that now. Thanks, Alex.
Thanks, Alex, appreciate that. Thank you, Jose. All right, status updates on the water supply.
No, no updates at this time, Mayor. We continue to, to track the drought. We, we provide information in our weekly newsletter on the status of the levels of water in the, in our primary reservoir that serves the northern Sonoma County, which is Lake Minassino. And we are continuing to track the state board's process with respect to the current drought that we are experiencing.
COVID-19, anything?
No updates, Mayor.
All right, council direction on future agenda items. Seeing none, hearing none, and, okay, there we are. We will adjourn at 7:29. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mike, you're taking the train on Friday?